I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Village of Campton Hills, October 7th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benetti?
Here.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee Hafsenberger?
Here.
Trustee Mallett?
Present.
Trustee Muir?
Here.
President Wenicki?
Present. Please rise for the pledge and Chief Lavand will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a quick announcement. Headwaters Academy have withdrawn their application to host the Montessori School on Campton Hills Road. So, under action items A and B, there'll be no action. We'll just pull it from the agenda. Just FYI. So, we'll move into public comments. Tracy.
Thank you. My name's Brooke Kelly. I'm here. I have a couple of questions just in regard to the Headwaters Academy. First, I want to thank you guys for your time. I know you guys spent countless hours, as we all have, researching and doing what's best for our residential community. But my question for you guys is, what's the process if they want to reapply? Do they start fresh? And do they go to the planning and zoning because they've already denied it? How does that look for us if Headwaters chooses to reapply?
As President Wenicki said, there's...so there's...the village board doesn't have
any standing to act on the ordinance right now because the application was withdrawn. So, it would be likely that if they...if I say "they," the applicant sought another special use, it would start back at the beginning. It's entirely possible that conditions could change from their perspective that would require a new application. Those would have to be taken into account at the Planning and Zoning Commission level before coming back to the village board.
Okay. So, if it starts back, they would post the sign and start?
Right. And that doesn't mean that if a special use application is filed, that the Planning and Zoning Commission won't take into account the prior hearing and the testimony that occurred there from both the applicant and the objector, because it's reasonable to think that if the special use application is for the same use, most of the conditions would not have changed. Most of the facts wouldn't have changed. So...but it would be a new process.
Okay. Thank you.
Katia Miller? Katia Miller?
Hello. My name is Katia Miller, and we live on South Bridle Creek Drive. And I'm proposing to reduce the level from 30 to 25 because there's no sidewalks. We have lots of kids. We walk in the dogs sometimes late at night. And people are driving really fast on that little street. It's La Fox Woods. It's like the little subdivision there.
I'm sorry, which street was it?
South Bridle Creek, but there's also Bridle Creek. It's like a whole little sub. There's no through traffic, nothing like that.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to comment on the...all the hard work the board put in on this Headwater thing. And I would like to thank the Advisory Committee members that put a lot of work and went through a couple of hearings and listened to the logic of this whole thing. And I really appreciate their work. And I hope that in the future, the Advisory Committees will be taken for what they have found. And they're very good people. They're community leaders. They're environmentalists. They're caretakers of the properties in Campton Hills. And they're good guys. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Hello. I am here for action item 5D, so I can defer my time until then.
James, is the mic working up there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I wasn't speaking.
That's it.
Okay.
Now that we recognize Scott.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I talked to Scott. So, yep, please come up, Scott. Scott Marquardt from H&R Green. Talk about some of our engineering and our roads.
Thank you. Try to keep the report brief. A quick update from Public Works Committee meeting last week. The next meeting in two weeks, the entire pack of minutes will be under for a longer staff report. But one thing I want to mention tonight is a recommendation that came from that committee was, on an upcoming call for grant applications, that we should submit a work order for two grant applications for federal funding for additional road projects. So, a heads up that you'll be seeing that in that work order in a two-week period. Couple of comments on the...some agenda items this evening. The pavement rejuvenation project, that has been completed. You have the paperwork for final change order, which came in a little bit under budget, and final pay estimate for that work. And that work did include the Norton Lake subdivision. That additional work was...the village was reimbursed by the developer for that, so we were able to include that in this year's project. Update on this year's roadway resurfacing project. As of...and again, on the agenda, there's three change orders and the first pay estimate for that roadway project. As of today, eight of the 11 roadways have been paved. They still have some restoration to complete. The last project...last roadways should be completed in about a two-week period. There is some drainage work, curb and gutter work, and then paving on those last three roadways, at which time the work on Connor's Road would also be performed in conjunction with that last set of roadways.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Scott? All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, but Carmen will start out by explaining 4E and 4F, correct?
Sure.
Yeah?
Just briefly, on 4E and 4F, they're listed as repealing prior ordinances and adopting or imposing new taxes that were previously discussed. With regard to the telecom telecommunications tax, we received notification from the Illinois Department of Revenue that they were looking for a more simplified language in the actual ordinance itself, rather than the extended language that really just adopted all of the state statute already. So, when we spoke to the Department of Revenue, they provided us with the language that they'd like to see in the ordinance that you see in front of you. All the other requests that the board had with regard to the use of the revenue from that tax, and also the municipal utility tax on furnishing gas, which is the other item, those remain in place. So, with regard to the utility tax on furnishing gas, we were contacted by NICOR requesting a couple changes, just some tweaking of the language in the ordinance, and to solidify the effective date of January 1st of 2026. So, we've made that change here as well. Both NICOR and the Department of Revenue confirmed receipt of the ordinances and agreed to impose the taxes as they were previously set. This is just a language change. So, there'll be no change to the effective date or the acceptance of these taxes with these two.
All right. Thank you, Carmen. Any questions for Carmen? Okay. We'll move on to the...oh, I'm sorry.
I need a motion to approve.
Yeah. All right. Anything to remove from the consent agenda? No items to remove? Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Janet. Seconded by Teresa. Roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hafsenberger?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Good. Motion passes. Moving on to action items. Do I need to formally remove A and B? No? Okay.
I think you stated it earlier. That's enough to remove it.
Okay. We'll move on to 5C. Motion to approve ordinance 25-32, allowing for the regulation of traffic on certain road within the Village of Campton Hills, Illinois. The roads are Brown Road and where it connects up with Old La Fox Road. So, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
I would second.
Moved by Ken. Seconded by Mike. Any discussion or questions? Janet?
I completely understand and support why it's appropriate to make it clear, in particular to commercial truck traffic, that these residential roads are not appropriate bypass routes for them. However, there are other secondary roads in the village, including roads other than Brown that we're about to pave, right, that I wonder which, if any of them, might be subject to a similar line of thinking, not to amend what we're looking at tonight, but, you know, we have three other roads that we're about to repave as part of a KKCom grant, which are secondary roads within the village. Are these roads that we want to explore similar restriction in? And is this a general policy for roads for which we can? And I understand there are roads that we can't. But for roads where we can, say, this is really a residential road, why are we driving a, you know, 80,000-pound truck on it? You know, can we do that more broadly?
So, with regard to the village's ability, as long as it's within your municipal street system, that's under your control. It's not a state road, not a township road.
Share responsibility.
Correct. You just have to pass an ordinance as you're doing tonight, as we did, I think it was Nancy Lee.
Nancy Lee.
Several months ago. But if the board is in agreement, and certainly probably in discussions with Chief Lavand, you can make a decision on that, and it would be a similar amendment to the village code.
So, obviously, a road that we have no jurisdiction over isn't...is up for discussion, but also a road that has a portion of responsibility, like Bulcom, for example, might be challenging?
Right. I think McDonald Road was another one that we discussed earlier about speed limits that would probably be very hard to enforce because it's back and forth, back and forth. But residential roads like this, a lot easier.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hafsenberger?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll move on to 5D. Motion to approve ordinance 25-35 to rezone 4 North 884, Old La Fox Road in Wasco, from a C1 local commercial district to an R4 residential district. Any questions or comments on that?
Need a motion first.
A motion to move it?
Oh, so move.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Frank. Any discussion or comments?
I just...I just have one. There was a statement in there about it. It's going to become nonconforming. I think that was because of a shed that's well too close to the setbacks.
I think it's a new garage they put up.
Okay. Yeah, it's another secondary structure or something, right?
Yeah. Correct.
So, I guess my question on that is, that nonconforming, is it going to...if they sell it, is it that nonconforming going to stay with the property or the current owners?
I could answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The nonconforming part is actually a portion of the house. It's not the garage that they've worked on. It's the...it's the south end of the house is close to the property line, and that's just the way it was built 100 years ago. It would stay with the...it would stay with the lot, of course, and if something ever happens, if it gets destroyed by a tornado or something, then they would have to...then the owners would have to comply with the current zoning ordinance in order to make that happen. So...
That's correct. And there is...there was a...some minor errors in the legal description in the staff report that then got carried over to the ordinance. So, Council reached out earlier today. We're going to make those amendments to the ordinance. So, the final copy that's signed by President Wenicki and the clerk will have those amendments or those scrivener's errors fixed, but everything else remains.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Roll call.
Well, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Janet.
I would just like a little more explanation of the project. And I wonder if we could get just a very brief staff explanation of what it is that we're doing here and why.
For this...this particular petition was to rezone the property. When the zoning ordinance was amended and the zoning map was amended, this specific property was zoned C1, even though there was a house located on it. From my recollection, during the zoning commission hearings, I think there was less of a desire to go parcel by parcel in this specific area because there were a mix of different uses. But there was some anticipation that people would come to petition to potentially change the zoning designation for some of these parcels. So, it was anticipated it was going to happen. This is the first that's happened.
Right.
I did not attend this zoning commission...or this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but from reading the minutes and speaking with Mr. Brown, it was fairly unanimous. And weren't many questions from the...there weren't many questions, if any, from the commissioner, so.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions? Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hafsenberger?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Good. Motion passes. Go to 5F. Motion to approve ordinance 25-29, amending the Campton Hills Village Code regarding building permits.
You missed one.
Oh, did I skip over one? I'm sorry. Motion to approve 25-36, approving a special use application for a self-storage facility, Old La Fox Road. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kim. Seconded by Nick. Okay. Any questions or comments?
If I may?
Sure.
If the price is right, I guarantee I'm buying one.
She's...
Just saying.
How many bikes could you get in there?
14.
That's funny. Janet.
Well, again, I think we've had prior conversation about this, so I think we all know what we're talking about. But for the benefit of everyone else who maybe doesn't, could we have a brief explanation of what this project is?
Sure. Just generally speaking, the building itself will essentially be a row of fire-separated storage units. And when you say "storage unit," they're commonly referred to as car condos, but you kind of have to think of that outside of the box, no pun intended. There won't be any residents in any of these condos. And that was a specific restriction that I believe you see...you do see in the ordinance. They're a place for individuals to, if they'd like, store vehicles, collector cars, motorcycles. It could...they don't have to be vehicles. People can use them for other types of storage of other items if they want. There are fairly significant restrictions on the...in the special use itself, and then also restrictions within the covenants over the property that were required as a condition through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and is also carried through into the ordinance. You know, they're meant for individuals that don't have place at their own home to store vehicles that they'd like to keep, you know, rather than in like a public storage, let's say. There are other...you may have heard of, I think it's called the...I'm blanking on the name. There's one in Naperville right now that's quite large.
Iron Gate.
Iron Gate. And, you know, it's a place for car collectors to, you know, have their collections all in one location, but, you know, to have a more of a...like a social aspect to it. There have been restrictions. We did place restrictions in the ordinance with regard to noise that matched the village's zoning ordinance or village code. No restrictions on operating businesses, inability to perform any sort of automotive repair, store large amounts of flammable liquids or fluids or things like that. So...
There is a convenience, you know, recreation or relaxation area associated with it, right? So, you can go upstairs and watch TV, have a drink or whatever.
There's a small loft.
But you can't live there.
Right. A small loft, and I believe each unit has a bathroom. And the way it was described by the applicant, it...you know, it's a place for people to store their vehicles, likely close to home, but not actually on their own property.
Teresa, go ahead.
I'm just curious. So, then there will be water hookup, water and sewer?
Yes. Yes. Water and sewer hookups. Individually climate-controlled, I believe they stated, and individually sold and entitled. No renting.
Is each unit just one car?
No. No. I think...
It's one space.
At least a few, maybe three.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Right.
Sounds interesting.
That's the way they're being marketed.
Okay. Thank you.
Frank, go ahead.
So, I have a question in regards to residency. What's the definition of residency? Because the Iron Gate, people don't live there, except when they want to get away from their spouse, maybe.
Right.
But there is the ability to sleep there, to be there. So, what...where do we draw the line? What's the residency line? I know you can't permanently live there, but if you wanted to go there for the weekend and, you know, you decide to have a bunch of guys over and play poker, and you're there until 3:00 in the morning, can you just go upstairs and go to bed and leave the next day?
No. So, the...and the applicant was accepting of this condition. It's number five. No overnight accommodations are allowed at all.
Okay.
Now, if you have a couch there, there wouldn't be a restriction on having furniture in the unit, but not an owner or any guest of the owner can stay in the unit overnight at all.
So, do we know...is this going to be similar to Iron Gate? Size-wise and setup-wise?
Much smaller. I think I want to say 11 units, 11 or 12. Is it 10 units?
10. Yeah.
But there...you know, so the...and we...we...when I say "we," staff required that this specific condition was in there about no overnight accommodations. That would also be in the covenants as well.
Okay.
So, not only would it be a violation of the special use, it would be a violation of the covenants, because there will be an association set up over the property.
Okay. Kim, no? Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Just general comment. This is, I think, when we look at special uses and areas in town where they're...they sort of blend. This is up against the trail. It's, you know, behind the larger house there, so it's kind of in between the different uses. It's also kind of behind the bank and is adjacent or nearby the propane dealer. So, I think it's a good spot for this type of use. And having seen them proposed in other towns, they're very successful, and I think it's a good amenity to offer to our residents.
Thank you for talking about the location. Teresa, go ahead.
I was going to say something similar, that it's also a nice solution now that we've asked for some of the, you know, extra vehicles to be removed from properties to give people another alternative, to say they have a place to put their extra vehicles, and it's local. It's right here. It's in a good location because it is surrounded by other commercial properties. And I do...I think the design is actually really nice.
Good.
I mean, it's decent. It'll look...I mean, that does matter, right? We do like it if it kind of fits in and looks nice. Anyway, so that was my comment, that I also think it kind of serves that purpose, that it'll give people an option to not have their...or to have to build a shed on their own property.
That's true. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hafsenberger?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Motion passes. And Tom Williams, probably very happy.
First customer?
Yeah, first customer. All right. I just had to throw that in. Moving on to action items F. Motion to approve ordinance 25-29, amending the Campton Hills Village Code regarding building permits. And I think all of you have a copy of...
Need a motion.
Yeah, I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. Nick, seconded. Seconded by Teresa. All right. Everybody should have a copy of what Nick had handed out, I would hope. And I think we're going to go through line by line. Is that what you'd like to do? Is that the plan, Mark?
May I?
Pardon me?
I feel we've done that already. The...
We never completed it, though. We never went through all the pages.
Disagree. And the ask was to...the consensus was to move this forward, all of this, right, that we're looking at right here, for passage tonight. So, if there is specific amendments that someone would like to make, you can do that. But I don't think there is any framework in which you can go through this line by line at this point.
Well...
We had that opportunity the last time, and we moved it forward as it was for action. So, that means that as of now, you can motion it forward, which already happened, or you can motion amendment, but a line-by-line reconsideration, I don't believe is on the table anymore.
Teresa, go ahead.
I think I am not going to be prepared to approve it as is. And so, I would like to go line by line. And it's not a lot of things, but there are just a couple of things. And I...we had talked about this before. So, it's up to you. We could either go through a couple of items, or we could, I guess, reset it to talk about again, or we could let it take a vote and see where it stands.
Well, as a point of order, I believe we moved forward the entirety of this from the last discussion for action now. And so, to make a change now, we could do that, but it requires making a motion to amend. And then one would need to be specific about what they wanted to amend.
I think it would probably be beneficial to have discussion on if there are any requests to amend it as is. Excuse me. To amend it from its current format. And if so, yes, make a motion to either amend it tonight to approve it with those amendments, or direct village attorney to make the changes and bring it back for action.
But again, to be specific, and my point of order is that the entirety of this was consensus to move forward for action in its entirety. And so, under Robert's rules, if you would like to move to amend a particular part of it, you can do so, but then you need to be specific about the parts that you want to amend. And there is no longer an opportunity to go through line by line as it sits on the agenda today.
Sure. I think if there are requests to amend specific portions, that particular board number just needs to indicate what that would be. And then, like you said, if there's a motion to amend and a second, then that would...
I'll make a motion to amend certain items. And do I...do you want me to say what those items are right now?
They're probably...
There's a few, so I should go through all of them?
Okay.
I think we should add a definition to, on the first page, the addition to the residence, just further define that and make a distinction between, for example, a sunroom versus a four-season type room.
Where are you at, Teresa?
I'm on...so, I've printed it out. Maybe I'm on...maybe I've got an old copy. I'm on, so I've printed it out, maybe I'm on, maybe I've got an old copy. I'm looking at page one, at the bottom of page one, under addition to residence.
Top of page two, okay.
Oh, okay, well, it's on my page one, so.
Oh, it's up at the top of page two, okay. I mean, let me ask this question, are we ready to go through one by one if we have questions? Because I don't think we completed it last time, I tend to disagree.
I don't recall completing it, to be honest, but I, and I don't have a lot of, I think most of it, we are in agreement, I just have a couple of things of just discussion.
Okay.
And I think, like, some of this, that's just a, just sort of defining, because obviously a fully functioning sunroom is different than a, like, a four-season room, it's just making it more clear that we're talking about fully functioning, you know, addition.
Do you think it matters, whether, I mean, whether it's three seasons or four seasons?
Apparently I do, because I brought it up, yeah.
I think we should cover too, in going through the list once again, anyone that says no permit required, just to make clear what you mean, and...
Again, point of order, this is not what we agreed to do, right?
I disagree.
But it doesn't matter, the fact of the matter is, there was consensus to move the document that we're looking at right now forward for action. So you might not have felt comfortable with it at that moment, but there was consensus to move it forward for action, and it is before us for action tonight, and so...
So why can't we review it and then take action?
We can, we can debate, I suppose, but I really don't think that we have an option anymore to go through this line by line, that we had that opportunity, you know, in previous meetings. It is before us for action now, and the primary consideration that's before us now is that, if I didn't understand this before, I'm really super clear on it now, after IML in September of this year, that for purposes of building any sort of a new building today, the village of Campton Hills does not have a building code. So, you don't have to have a building code, by the way, state doesn't require it, but you can't build a new building in Campton Hills today without doing one of two things. You either have to adopt the most recent, most restrictive 2024 state building codes with no exemptions or amendments, or you can choose a building code that you and the developer agree on within 100 miles of the place that you're building. How that happened, nobody knows, but that's part of current legislation. What you don't get to do is, you don't get to continue not passing a building code with a PUD approval coming up, and zoning being granted to somebody in the future, and not having taken care of this issue. Because right now, today, Shodin, if they try and build the first building based on where we sit today, they're subject to the 2024 IRC exactly as it's written, which includes sprinklers, which obviously is not what they intended. So, part of what we're trying to do here is to make sure that we're up to date, that we have a 2024 building code with amendments that we've previously discussed, and that we've previously come to consensus on, and that we think are going to work for our community, and that are going to work for this subdivision. So, I don't think that there, I just don't see why we would be going back and trying to revisit line by line, and especially the no permit required issues. And if you want to do that, I think it's not going to go well. So if you want to do it, we can do it, but I don't think it's going to go well.
Can I just, I just want to add, it's important that we look at the items that say no permit required, for reasons of public safety, it's a safety issue, there's no question. When I think about that, you know, it might create a lot of neighbor disputes, when your neighbor, no permit's required, they might put two sheds right along your property line, and, because they don't want to see them, but you don't want to see them either.
Excuse me, but that is not what we're talking about.
Yeah, we are.
Those no permit required issues are for replacement, repair and replacement of existing facilities on your property.
Let me finish.
So none of those no permit issues, with all due respect, involve people renegade building a shed on their property without a permit, and it is completely disingenuous for you to suggest that they do.
Okay.
So I, there's been a motion and a second, I think it's perfectly acceptable to have discussion on the ordinance that's in front of the board right now. Whether or not that discussion results in a request for an amendment to the motion, that will be, you know, that will occur after the discussion's over, but there's, should be no restriction on discussion about the ordinance itself.
Wasn't there an amendment started?
I think there was.
I heard those words.
Okay, should I continue? I am, I'm a little concerned still about, and I've got other things, but on page, my page four, not requiring a permit for the water heater replacement, even if it is the same BTU size and vent, I think we should require a permit for safety reasons, I think that's one of the issues that we should at least talk about.
What would be your concern?
I've got more.
I'll continue then.
Well, I don't know if we want to talk about that particular one or not.
Can you, for just the sake of...
Do you want me to keep going?
Discuss one at a time and see if there's...
That's what I thought you would do, is...
To be made.
So you're making a proposal, amendment to require a permit?
Well, just, I would leave it the way it was, I believe it was, it was required, I think that it was taken out if you were going to replace it with the same size, BTU size and vent, it was if you just were going to replace it with the exact same thing, that you didn't need a permit, and I'm just saying, I, I think there's enough of a safety concern there, that we should just leave it alone and require a permit for that, that is one of the, I know that it's an infrequent type of a thing, but water heaters do cause fires and blow up infrequently.
For tracking purposes, Carmen, would it be the most logical way to address each amendment, to see if it has four votes to amend? Because it's going to take four votes to amend what's before us, right?
Logistically speaking, there are several amendments to the village code that are being made by this ordinance. So, I'm always hesitant to make changes to an ordinance on the fly, and then approve it at the same meeting, when, you know, I'm sitting here trying to track all of the changes. If it's one or two small changes, that's very easy, just like we had the Scrivener's Error in the legal description on one of the prior ordinances, but I certainly would encourage discussion on these issues, but I think it would probably be beneficial for the board to see a clean copy after a consensus is made, whether that's not to make any of the amendments, or it is to make some of them, I think we should, the board should get through the discussion on them each individually, then come to a consensus, if it's one or two small changes, you can approve it via an amendment tonight, if it's 15 changes, I, personally, I'd feel a lot more comfortable providing you with a clean copy before it is sent off for vote and signature.
But before we know we have 15, can we, can we just address each one of the discussion items and see if there's four votes to say, change what's before us?
It may be the best way to do it.
Just logically, so we can track and not miss what the consensus of the board has.
Sure.
So you're proposing to go back, to stay with what was, and not...
Just for that, and that particular item, and, yeah, there's...
On hot water heaters. So we'll need...
So will the consensus?
We need a consensus, does people want what's written tonight, or do they want to go back to that, have an improvement?
That you need a permit for a water heater replacement?
Nick has it, her.
Yeah, Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, so I would agree with Janet, we have had this on in the last several months, I think, three times on the agenda. The first time it was on the agenda, we did slowly go through line by line, and I've also, kind of in the background, being that I have been working on this and making the edits for the agenda, talking to people and taking their considerations into amending this. So all that being said, we should be at a place where everybody has seen this and gotten their two cents in, or their opinions in, and had the adjustments made. That being said, with the water heaters, I'll just provide a little bit of data, so that we all have it when we're making a decision on this amendment, but in Campton Hills, whether we would agree we replace water heaters every 20 years or every 15 years, we either have 90% or 92.5% of the community does not pull a permit to replace a water heater. When we look nationwide, the real risk from water heaters, we have to realize, we're talking about new water heaters. The risk of explosion wouldn't come from a water heater that was just installed, that would come from a water heater that has been aged and needs to be replaced. You know, when a pressure relief valve doesn't work anymore and causes a failure to the water heater. The real issue from a new installation would be a venting issue and carbon monoxide death. So there is an organization that tracks all this, but before I scroll back up to the top, I'm just going to give you the data, and then I can give you the agency, cpse.gov. But with water heaters, this chart, all reported non-fire carbon monoxide poisoning deaths associated with consumer products, and it's organized by fuel type, if we look at reported water heater poisonings from 2010 all the way out to 2020, and these are that resulted in a death, there were two in 2010, four in 2011, from 2012 to 2015, there were none, 2016 there was one, 2017, four, one in 18, 1906, and none in 2020. There were just under 10 million water heaters installed in the United States annually, it's like 9.8 million. So we have 90 to 93% of the community doesn't pull a permit to begin with, one or two, three, four, five nationwide folks die from carbon monoxide poisoning. I think really what we're doing is we're over-regulating, and I think that by eliminating a replacement permit with really strict guidelines stating that if you are doing any changes in size, venting, location, changing from a gas stand-up to a tankless, well, these all require permits. The people that are, you know, duct-taping leaks, they're not the people that are calling for permits to begin with, you know? So I don't think that there is really a safety concern here, when we really look at the data and the information, I think it's more, somehow, somewhere, somebody made everybody think that replacing a water heater was this super risky endeavor, putting your family and the community's safety at risk, and it's not. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of information.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
And I have great respect for you, you know that, but one death is just as important as four, or five, or six deaths, you know, and I know that you're looking at maybe data that's pretty old, but I think it's still very important. And, you know, the people who don't pull a permit, that's their choice, that they want to make, but I think as far as a safety issue and an insurance issue, I think matters as well. I think most people would be apt to pull a permit, to make sure it's done the right way, so that, you know, they could have a review afterwards to make sure it was installed correctly. So that's my, that's my way of looking at it. Trace, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, you and I had talked about this, and I completely respect, I also think you're, you know, very knowledgeable, and I think you probably know a lot more about this than I do, and I think those same statistics might apply to each and every one of these, you know, that the risks that are involved in some of this is probably fairly minor, but there is a risk involved, and I think there's no harm in requiring a permit, and like Janet, or, excuse me, President Winicki said, if people choose not to get the permit or seek the permit, then they're choosing to take the risk on themselves. But as a community, do we offer the permit and make sure that we are providing that sort of safety check? I don't know, that, I, after we had spoken about this and looked at it, there were just a few things, most of it, I can get on board with not having permits for certain things, that just happened to be one of them, and then there's another one that we can talk about later, but just it has to do with roofing, and if I can get permission from President Winicki to ask Tracy a question, she brought up a good point about just roofing in general, and how, when you're either having a realtor or someone, you know, calling, or you've got an insurance company calling about a house, they often will call the village and ask us to pull the latest permits, to see how, you know, old the roofing is and that type of thing. So, we might want to take that into consideration, too, because it might be affecting some of our residents' ability to get their insurance coverage, coverage on some of the replacement roofs because of hail damage or something else. So I, and I hadn't thought about that, and I thought that was, that was another, that was the reason why I brought some of this up today, that wasn't discussed before, because this new information that I have received, but I don't know if Tracy would want to talk about that, I'm not sure if she looks like she wants to.
Go ahead, Tracy.
But it's just something to take into consideration.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah, so talking from the side of where you actually work here and issue the permits, there are a lot of phone calls that do come in when houses are listed for sale, from either the potential buyer or the realtor, to see if permits were pulled for all the stuff that's listed as new, and then insurance companies do call a lot for roofing permits, because they want to confirm the age if they're going to pay a claim on hail damage or wind damage, that, you know, if your roof's already 25 years old, you're probably not going to get much, but if it's only three years old, the insurance company will be there for you. So I think it's important that those roofing permits stay in place, and same with siding, too, with hail damage as well.
Yep. Go ahead, Janet.
I'm confused, it still says that a roof replacement requires a permit, $135. So, re-roofing and adding a layer of shingles to an existing roof, which I'm not sure who does that these days anyways, I don't know if you can find a roofer that wants to do that these days, but, but a full tear-off roof replacement, which is what everybody that I know has ever done on a roof for my entire adult life, that requires a permit, $135. So why is there a discussion here predicated on the notion that we're not requiring roofing permits? How does that, how did that happen?
Well, there is a change made to that section, so it, there is a change made, and so that is fair game to discuss, and so if you don't want to discuss that change, then we can always just agree to put it back to how it was originally, I guess, and just say that it's required. That's up to you, but there is, all this red indicates that there's a change made to that entire section, so we've added a, sort of a pull-out, or I guess a carve-out section, so don't have that carve-out then, I guess, and leave it the way it was, and we have a permit for the roofing.
All right, should we move on? What's the consensus for the water heater replacement? Leave it that they need a permit, or no permit required? Kim, go ahead.
I say that they still need the permit, regardless if they pull it or not, it just covers us from, you know, the last thing I want to see is a do-it-yourselfer, put that exhaust in wrong, the next thing you know, the whole family's dead.
Okay.
All about safety, right here, so.
Okay, go ahead, Janet.
I have a question for you directly, President Winicki, how many permits have you pulled in the village of Campton Hills since 2007?
I don't think it matters.
Well, I think it does.
Yeah?
I think it does, because I suspect that your approach has been similar to most of the rest of our residents.
the rest of our residents, and you've taken care of things that needed to get taken care of as they needed to get taken care of. And you found people that did care of things as was needed, you maintained your property well, you maintained your property properly. I don't think anybody would have any question about any of that. But I suspect you didn't get permits for most of that work. And yet you're, and yet you're suggesting that everyone else needs to. I would just like to know what your personal practices.
I'm not going to answer that, because I think it's a ridiculous question, but go ahead, Mike.
I would answer that. I've gotten permits for everything I've done. I mean.
What did you say?
I've gotten permits for everything I've done. So, point, I don't think the point is whether we're, whether we are or aren't getting permits. The point is, do we want to require the level of permits as we've been requiring? And we've had some good discussion over it, and I'm getting a little lost of where we are in the discussion right now. I understand that there's some concerns, so maybe if we can express the concerns as we started to, we started to take the consensus just there, and we didn't finish taking the consensus. So I would suggest, let's take a consensus, tally those, and then go to the next thing and take consensus and tally those and see how far we get.
So what's before you is, Therese has proposed an amendment to not accept what's before us, to go back to what was required before on the hot water heater. So you've got one and two people heard from, so if you just continue down that.
We just need, unless there's more comments.
Yeah, here's what I would tell you. The concern on the do-it-yourselfer, and I'll take the fifth on this one, a do-it-yourselfer is not going to ask for a permit. The reason they're doing it themselves is they either think they can do it, or they're capable of doing it, or they can't really afford to get it, which I don't think we have that issue here. But in my opinion, a do-it-yourselfer is not going to ask, not going to go get a permit in the majority of the time, okay? Not 100%, but the majority of the time. So I don't think putting the permit back in for that person is valid. I mean, just because I know do-it-yourselfers, and you can go stand around Home Depot all the time, and there's guys in jeans pulling water heaters off the shelf and throwing them in their truck, and I guarantee you, they don't have a permit. So if that's the reason, I can't support it, that we need a permit. So if that's the only reason.
So you're staying with what's before us?
Yeah, yeah. And look, I agree that we went through all this line item by line item, and it was a long meeting, and I think we all got home at about 11:30 that night. And I think there's been opportunity to address this stuff, but that particular line item, look, I'm all about safety and one life isn't, you know, if we lose one life, it's important, but my guess is if we lose it, it's going to be for somebody who wasn't going to get the permit anyway, so. And to me, a shoddy contractor is more of a concern for me than a do-it-yourself guy, so. That's just my opinion. So for me, I would leave it as is.
Go ahead, Therese.
I just, I think we've got a difference of opinion on how much we've gone through this, but either way, I don't understand what the issue is if I still want to look at a few things. I think it's my, sort of my job to do that. If I don't feel that it was looked at the way I, you know, and like I said, I've got additional information that in talking to some people, I don't think it hurts anything to go through a few things. We probably spent more time talking about going through it than we would have just going through it.
Well, I think we're going through it, so let's keep going, right? So who else hasn't commented on it?
So.
We need Mike. So right now, it stands three to leave it as it is before you, and there's an amendment by Therese, and Kim supports the amendment, so Mike needs to explain. On this, I.
Well, again, point of order. Point of order, but you don't get.
Need to be recognized.
Not for a point of order, I don't. So for a point of order, which, is what I'm making here, you don't get to have multiple amendments at one time to the ordinance. So you can say, I'm proposing amendment with this, this, and this. You don't get three amendments, or four amendments, or five amendments.
I think it would be very beneficial for the board for trustee Hoppensberger to list out all of the requests she's making, and then you have a discussion on them, because otherwise, I think, again, you will be here quite late into the evening. This ordinance, this issue was presented at a prior meeting with a summary from trustee Botner. A request was for us to prepare an ordinance. The ordinance was placed on the agenda for discussion. I don't recall if it was gone through line by line at the time, but I know it was, I believe, on the September 2nd agenda. There have been minor adjustments to it between that date and tonight, to more closely align it to the matrix that trustee Botner provided at a previous meeting, I think in August. But if there is a request to make amendments to the current format that's on the agenda for action tonight, I think it would be beneficial to hear them all at the same time, because going one by one and then taking a consensus might be difficult to, to, to package into a singular vote at the end. And if at the end of the discussion on the proposed amendment, the board is not ready to act on the ordinance as presented tonight, then the board can discuss what they'd like to do at that point.
Therese, go ahead.
Well, clearly, I'm late to the party here, and we are not going to go through, because I have quite a few comments, and I guess I'm not going to go through it all. So if you guys want to go ahead and vote on this, you can vote on it. I think that, I just think you err on the side of caution, and if people, if do-it-yourselfers don't pull permits, that's on them. As a community, you don't, you know, acknowledge that and say, well, now we're not going to require it. You just say, well, then you guys are going to take the risk yourself. I, I just, I think, some of this I don't mind. Some of it, I think, has to be defined a little bit better. And we've been extremely busy these last several months, and so if I didn't ask the questions I needed to ask at the last meeting, I apologize. But if you're all ready to go ahead and move forward with this.
Therese, go ahead and list everything that you have, you know, Xed off on your sheet.
Okay, so I had the.
And we'll combine them all.
Okay, given that we've gone from $200 to $1,000 for that addition to residents, I just thought it would make sense to define.
Okay, what page are you on?
This is first page, but I think for you guys, it's the top of page two.
Okay.
Because we don't need to pull a $1,000 permit for a sun, for, you know, for a season room, I mean, for a sunroom.
So do you want to reduce the amount?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, do we want to add any kind of a definition there? And explain what that, like, what an addition is, or do you just have them come in for the permit and we explain it to them at that time? I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So are we discussing items? Sorry, I had my hand up. We are not.
We're going to try to.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to try to make a list of what Therese's concerns are, okay? Go ahead.
We had talked about with the, I know this is, this is going to get nitpicky, and you guys aren't going to like it, but, you know, with the picket panel post replacement, the similar items, do we put any kind of a limit on that? I mean, what if someone's replacing, like, an entire side?
Okay, what are you on now?
On page two.
Mm-hmm. For fencing?
This is, yeah, so under fences, the picket panel post replacement.
Panel post, okay.
So do we, would we want to add a limit to that? Is there a, if like an entire side falls down, is that considered just a picket panel post replacement? Or is it, are we talking like a section, or, you know? Does it matter? Do we care?
What's that for?
That is what it says right now. Yes, the entire fence.
Okay.
Now, what does it say? The current?
Yeah, but again, are we discussing right now, or do we want to let Therese go through everything?
Yeah, we do want to.
Okay, all right. I don't want to slow things down, so.
So I was concerned about this interior remodel, and it, you know, requiring more of a definition. How do we know that, how do we know that it's, it's a remodel that is not moving structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing? How do you know that if we don't have someone go in and look at it? We don't have an inspection done?
Is that on page four?
Page three.
Three?
Residential interior remodel only with no structural, mechanical, electrical, or plumbing changes or additions. How do we know that if no one goes and looks over at it? Then I get to the next page, which is the water heater issue I've already talked about. So I don't think that people very often replace their electrical service panel unless they're upgrading it, so I'm not quite sure why we are separating that out, but I suppose if you really feel, but I can't imagine someone going and replacing their electric service panel and replacing it with the same exact item. I would just leave that not separated out. Do you think that's really something that we would do? I don't know. The roofing, we already talked about. I think we talked, I talked about for the siding gutters, window replacement, exterior doors, and other minor alterations, we could possibly lower the rate on some of the window permits.
Instead of no permits?
Yes. Replacement of siding gutters, windows, doors of similar size materials, again, I just, I'm a little concerned about there being no permits required for that as well. I think we could have some difficulty with some insurance company issues on that if it was, you know, damaged due to some, some, I don't know, if you're filing an insurance Let's see, generators, once again, I'm not quite sure if people normally replace their generators with the exact same thing, but that one's fine, I guess you could leave that one. So that's, that's it.
Solar panels?
Oh, solar panels. So once again, I would just strike the whole, like, replacement section and just leave it all with solar panels and leave it all as one category.
So newer replacement is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
I think that also kind of falls in the roofing kind of category of if it's in, it's some sort of damage, and you're getting an insurance company to come over, just have the inspection done.
Yeah, and not all solar panels are put on roofs. They might be in somebody's backyard. I know in Wideview, that was an issue. It's very close to the neighbor's fence. There were several solar panels that were installed. So I think that is worthy of an inspection as well. Let Therese finish here, yeah.
You're not going to like it, but I'm, I think the generator kind of falls in the same category as the other, where I don't know how many people replace them with the exact same size, but.
You're back on the generators?
Yeah, I think I would just, I would just make it the one generator fee with the new installation or replacement, leave it alone with that. So that's it.
Okay. Where do we go? Go ahead, Janet.
So, I'll go in reverse order. If I had a solar installation, and if I had a panel that went bad, I would replace it like I replace a light bulb. It's not something that would involve an inspection, or a permit, or any such of a thing. So this notion, and it's correct, by the way, that some solar panels are not on the roof, they're on the ground, this is a concern, and where those panels are placed is a concern, and there are setback requirements and so forth, absolutely. That applies to a new installation, so let's not be confused. Replacing a permit on an existing, excuse me, replacing a panel on an existing installation, be it on your roof or on the ground, this is not a thing. You don't, you don't need a permit for this. The notion that you would need a permit is ridiculous, and how and why we're conflating the setbacks of a new installation on the ground with the replacement of a panel, I don't understand. The comment about the generator, fair, although, you know, if my generator went bad, I wouldn't increase the size of it, so I would replace it with exactly the same generator, and I would appreciate not needing to get a permit for that. You know, as you pointed out, we've already been through the roof issue. Similar thing can happen with electric panels. There are various reasons that people might choose to replace it. Personally, if I was going to go through all of that time and effort and expense, I would probably want to increase the amperage, but then again, that's a real big expense. And I might find that I had an aged panel. I might find that I had an aged panel that had been, that had, that had issues. There have been some problems in decades past, decades past, with circuit breakers that failed en masse. And you might want to replace your panel, because the panel itself is dangerous, with same size and everything, but just because the internal components need replacing. When it comes to fence posts and pickets and so forth, I believe the notion here was that if you're moving the fence, if you're rebuilding the fence such that it could be contemplated that you're moving it, then there would be a permit. But if you're just replacing a post, replacing a picket, replacing a section, it doesn't really matter whether it's one, or 10, or 25 pieces. The point is, you're replacing pieces along the same line where they all previously existed. So I don't know why we would be contemplating a permit for that. For interior remodeling, I take your point that someone might decide that their internal remodeling involved knocking out a wall that they shouldn't have knocked out, although that is ultimately their bad luck if they chose to do that. But the interior remodeling that's contemplated here, I think, is that I want to redo this bathroom. I'm not going to move any plumbing, I'm not going to put any different electric or anything like that. All I want to do is take out the old stuff, put in new stuff. You know, I think that's the type of internal remodeling that's contemplated. You know, so changing finishes inside the house, changing finishes, that's what remodeling usually is. So I think, you know, I can't imagine that we're going to require a permit and send an inspector out to decide whether somebody is knocking out a bearing wall every time somebody remodels a room. That's just ridiculous. And I think we have to assume that if people are conducting a big enough project, that they're going to knock out a bearing wall, then there are either going to be, to Frank's point, a do-it-yourselfer that really thinks they know what they're doing, I don't know, or that you're going to have a contractor who's going to advise you that you need actually maybe more than a permit, you need a structural engineer and a bunch of other stuff. So I just don't see that these interior remodels are going to lead to, you know, bigger, better problems. And, you know, I appreciate the, you know, the concern with life safety here, but I think it's, I think it's misplaced.
All right, anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
In order presented, actually, I'll, addition to residents, let me come back to that. In order presented, the, the, oh, the fence, I like the change. I think if you're replacing, even if you replace a whole, I don't care if you replace your entire fence if you don't move the post, I think that's fine. Because my concept of why we inspect fences, and the only reason we inspect fences is rezoning. So if you're, if you're, if you're taking out one by one and replacing by one, I think that's, I'm okay with the language as presented. With the residential interior with no structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, I'm okay with that as well, because it's clear that you're not changing any of the things that the inspector is going to. Any of the changes in the building code that we should adopt, that would, that would relate to types of fixtures, types of receptacles, all that kind of stuff. You're not changing any of that, so, because it says no structural or mechanical electroplumbing additions. I'm fine. Question on how we enforce that, separate issue, but the language here I think is okay. Water heater replacement, I'm so old school, you need to get a permit for that. Electrical panel replacement of the same amperage, I think that's fine to, to both points. If you're gonna up, if you're gonna change it, it's more likely than not that you're going to up, you're going to size up. If you're changing out because you still got push buttons or something goofy like that, I think that should be fine, that you can change, you can put in the same sized panel. The question about roofing is a good one in that you should, a full roof is 135 bucks, same as we already were talking about. I'm talking about allowing an extra layer of shingles or two with no permit required. If somebody wants to do that, I think I'm fine with that too. The original, the original, the reason you inspect roof permits is to take a look at the underlayment and the sheathing primarily, and make sure that it's not rotted out. That's why you do that. So if you're going on top of that, that's more caveat emptor there. Replacement of siding gutters, windows, doors of similar size and materials. I would, in general, on a, and here's where we might need to think about this. In a one-off, that's fine, but unlike what I said for the fence, if you're changing everything in the house, and that's a little bit more than I think is contemplated here, because then you may need to look at the fact that you've touched all your light and vent in your house, it should be up to code on light and vent. So I would probably say that needs a review. It may not need a permit issued, but it may be something that actually has to be reviewed at the counter, and maybe it is, maybe it is just like a $25 review fee as opposed to a permit fee, and then Jim or someone who's here could say, oh, no, you're, yeah, exactly, that's right, you're just doing your front door in and out, no problem. Oh, no, you're doing seven windows and, you know, that bedroom already has underlight on it, so you're gonna have to make a change. So, hmm, that's not, that's not a solid yes or no on that. I would say, uh, I would, I would say no to the proposed language. We need to revise it to somewhere in that that vein where we would have at least a review of prior to work. Generator replacement in kind, yeah, you shouldn't need a permit for that, because the hookups are already there, you're putting in the same spot. I think that would be okay. And then solar panel replacement, if it's a replacement of a panel or component, I don't think you need a permit for that either. So that's where I'm at. No, you would. That's, that's the way it says right now. And, and to, to the point, the changes on, on each of these, these areas where we've got the new language to clarify that it's no longer just roofing, that there's two types, or it's, you know, there's no longer generator, there are now two types. I accept the new language that is indicative of new installation, underlying all that stuff, because that's what we're talking about. And what I'm saying is, and in this case, I'm agreeing to the new language also for no permit required for the additional, what, going back to where I wouldn't say is water heater that would, would go or stay the way it was, and then there's one other, uh, one other, one other, where was it? Oh, back to accessory structure, or back to addition to residence. To Trustee Hafensberger's point, do we have a definition in the build code of itself that defines addition? Are we comfortable with that definition? And if so, is your, is your question answered based on somebody telling us, no, this is very clearly how we determine what is and what is not an addition? Lacking that, yeah, we would need something that, that would clarify IBC or clarify through local amendment that, that shows, you know, a three-season room because there's no heating component to it, or however we would define it. That might be a good example and say, okay, no, it's a three-season room, that's not, not what we're talking about. But if you're bringing electrical, if you're bringing HVAC out there, you're bringing plumbing out there, that type of thing, then yeah, you're gonna need a, you're gonna need a permit.
All right, go ahead, Treese.
Just real briefly, I mean, I think some of my concerns could even be addressed with just better definitions in some of this, so that people really know what you're, you know, what we're talking about.
Okay, do you, do you want to amend the current motion with your items?
Not quite sure how to amend that motion. Some guidance?
Right, I think what, so I think what President Winnicky is asking is, is the, um, what you stated before, are you framing that as a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with the amendments that you suggested? So it would be an amendment to the motion that's already been made to approve the ordinance that's on the...
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the, the amendment with the, the motion with the amendments that I have proposed?
It would be a motion to approve the ordinance with the...
The ordinance with the amendments I have proposed.
Correct, and that would, it would need a second.
You need a second?
Second for discussion.
And then, do you want discussion or can we move on? Okay, all right, go ahead, Treese.
Is it back to me? So what are we discussing? Are we going over these again?
No, no, just amend the items that you spoke about.
Okay, so I don't have a definition to add. Go ahead.
I think you're at the point now where there's, you, you've provided the amendments that you're looking for to the ordinance. It's been seconded, and now it's up for discussion if any of the other trustees are, have any comments or are accepting of the amendments that have been presented.
So I need clarification on the motion. Is the motion to approve everything that, um, Trustee Hoffensberger put on the table? Or is it to amend it based on what Trustee Mallett said or what some other? So basically, it's, it's all or nothing at this point. Is that, I just want to be clear on what we're voting on.
The purpose of an amendment, the purpose of a motion to, you know, amend the proposed ordinance can be for one minor issue or for a list of issues. It's somewhat difficult with this ordinance that's presented to you tonight because there are probably 20 changes to the village code within this ordinance itself. So it, right now, it's coined as a motion, an amendment to the entire ordinance that's presented to you with several different changes. So yes, in essence, it is, it is the entire list. Now, that doesn't mean that after discussion, that the board can come to a consensus on the amendment, and that was changes, and it's pared down significantly, let's say, to just a couple things.
Okay, so my opinion is I would not vote for all of them. I would be more inclined to look at Trustee Mallett's suggestion, even though I disagree on the water heater. But, you know, I probably have more concern with electrical than I do with water heater, but that's just my personal comfort level. But I would personally, just throwing out my opinion to everybody, I would not approve all those changes. I would probably be more inclined to go with Trustee Mallett's recommendation.
I think at this point, now that you have, you have the entire list that has been presented by Trustee Hoffensberger, and you're in discussion, it may be a good time to determine what, you know, consensus would be on a, on, I'll say, some middle ground. And then i- if it turns out that it's just a couple of things or a few things, then we can probably approve the ordinance this evening based on those few minor changes, and I can provide that text to the clerk afterward.
We're going through all of them again that way now?
Well, the list has been provided, the list has been provided, and I think the discussion, the discussion is now on the, the potential changes.
Go ahead, Janet.
Responding to Trustee Benetti and also Trustee Mallett, of all of the discussions, the thing that I think most requires clarification is what an addition to a residence actually is. And so I don't know if we have a good definition of that ourselves. I suspect, but I don't know for a fact, that the 2024 IRC actually does provide a definition for this and that we can refer to that. And so I do not disagree with Trustee Hoffensberger that, you know, if someone was adding a three-season room that is rather less ambitious and involves less oversight and inspection and so forth by the village than a full-on, you know, addition to their home. And I agree with Trustee Mallett that it would appear that based on what's in front of us at this moment, we don't have a good definition. The definition probably exists, it's just not in front of us. And so if we could, um, if we could move forward with this, you know, with a, you know, a clarification to what constitutes an addition to the residence, you know, what I think we mean is a four-season addition to the residence, right? A fully inhabitable addition. That's the one thing that, that stood out for me, you know, out of the discussion.
And just for context, there, there is a definition in the IRC regarding addition. So if the village does adopt whatever version of the IRC at the time that's adopted, it's, it's going to be with the definition that's in the IRC.
Thank you.
And that would be obviously available to village staff or any outside consultant that is, is reviewing a project as to whether or not it needs a permit. I mean, I can read it. It says, "An extension or increase in floor area, number of stories, or height of a building or structure." That's what it says in the IRC.
Go ahead, Nick, I'm sorry.
Could I request a vote on this amendment? We need to vote on this amendment, correct?
Teresa's?
Teresa's? And we could make in a second all...
Call the question?
Call, call the question, please.
There's been a vote requested, so it's a request for a vote on Trustee Hoffensberger's amendment, so...
Amendment.
We need a roll call?
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Hassanberger?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Nay.
Trustee Benetti?
Nay.
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. And then, Mike, you want to make an amendment?
I could try an amendment. Okay, let me, let's try.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to amend the proposed ordinance as follows. So... Keep that, keep that, keep that.
Mike, can I throw out a couple thoughts while you're putting your motion together?
Sure.
Yeah. I was considering making a motion to amend also. I, in the addition portion, just a note to adopt the IRC definition of what an addition is. And that could be added in. Village attorney could put up an asterisk. We could remove the water heaters. And with the windows, we could do a $25 plan review, but coming up with a way to phrase it where it implies that a permit is not necessarily required, but a $25 plan review. Those were my, based on what everybody had said.
Okay, let's, let's do this then. Okay, so I would suggest in the proposed language in the box, currently reading addition to residence, add language as defined by the adopted residential building code, by the village's adopted residential building code. Then for, uh, dropping down to... Where did it go? Where's the water heaters? Well, passed them twice now. Somebody find the water, what, what part of the water heaters, folks? Oh, I found it, found it. On, uh, in, on, uh, page four in section entitled, "Current language water heater replacement, same BTU slash size slash vent, and no permit required," to delete that language, which would leave it as it is in the current. And I think...
Electrical service panel?
I'm okay with the proposed language. And then, um, I would add a section... Or, let's see, building-related activities. Okay, I would add a... Okay, I would add a section af, in 331, building and related activities under the language prior to the table. Nope, strike that, strike that. As a, after the table, prior to section three severability, I would add language that, uh, $25 permit fee application shall be required for all roofing, siding, window, and door replacement projects. Period. And then a new sentence that building official shall determine if a further permit fee is required. And then we've got the permit fees that we, that are in the table here. So that's what I would suggest.
Okay, is that your amendment?
I'll second.
Okay, Janet's second. All right, roll call on the amendment? Discussion, I'm sorry. I'll be here till 3:00.
May I? So, I'm fine with all of this language, although the water heater thing, I, I don't... I mean, they did a whole episode of Mythbusters on this, to bust this myth that water heaters explode. They don't, so... Yeah, well, they don't explode. You have to, like, go out of your way to make it explode. You have to sabotage it to make it explode. But anyways, um, the, the one that I struggle with a little bit is the windows, doors, and siding. You can't have to come into the village hall because you want to replace a door. You can't have to come into village hall because you want to replace a window. I, I understand that there's, there's consideration in terms of scale, right? But there are, when it comes to siding, for instance, a lot of villages say that you need to come talk to us when it's more than 25% or when it's an entire wall or whatever. So I don't know how you would, how you would determine scale, but you need to have some way to make it clear that you're, you know, we're back to the basic idea of, I just want to repair or replace something in my house that, that needs it, right? And so, like, I just want to replace the service door to my garage, or I want to even replace the front door set. You know, I mean, I don't know that you need a permit for this. Now, I understand with windows in particular, that we run into the Illinois Energy Code a little bit on this, right? Which was, I attended a session on this at IML with the guy who's responsible for enforcing all of this, who was asked a number of questions by people from towns all over the state deeply in earnest about whether they were doing anything wrong when it came to a lot of different details of this nature. And he said, "Look, um, like, there is one guy in the state charged with enforcing all of this. I'm busy, and this isn't the only hat I wear." And, and he went on to explain that the Capital Development Board, which is the people that do this stuff statewide, are primarily interested in making sure that their new structural guidelines are implemented everywhere. And pretty much whatever else you want to do around the edges, they're not looking. So he's also the guy that's responsible for, you know, this, you know, the, the energy-efficient windows, and he hadn't looked, so...
I'd, I'd take doors, I'd take doors and siding out then, and just leave it to windows.
Yeah, and, and as we've discussed before, it's there, the requirement's there, the enforcement mechanism isn't, right?
So since you're, if you're the second, all right, we then revise that language to just say windows.
How about siding, windows and siding? Just windows?
You'd indicated, just, just for clarification, you said $25 permit fee application shall be required for all roofing siding... be required for all roofing, siding, window, and door," so-
So that would include the roof. So, let's just leave it to windows. So strike all that for what I said, and just for windows, because that's where the light and vent and the energy code becomes an issue.
All window replacement.
And so, with our, building officer can determine if it requires, if they say, "I want to do all the windows," yeah, you're going to need a permit. If he says, "I'm just doing this window," I can say, "Here's your review fee, you're good."
So just windows?
Okay.
No. They covered everything.
I-
Should resecond it, yes.
Yes, I need to resecond the amendment, yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
So, just a quick question on that, sorry. So, we're leaving it up to the inspector to determine if it's just one window, you're okay to go. If you're replacing all your windows, you're probably going to need a permit, or whatever. Just so I understand-
Yeah, and I think we'd get staff to give us a direction on what the threshold is for that, and then we would publish that on the, because maybe two small windows, or it could be the size of the window, or it could be, you know, but the concept is, come talk to us first, and based on what we've said, then we can assist you, and then say, "Oh, no, no, you're just, these two windows, exacts in and out, you're fine, you don't need a permit." Or, yeah.
Right. The, you'll see that the, let's say flyer that talks about window replacement, that's after the ordinance in the packet that Trustee Botner provided, that that is meant as an example of what would be on the village's website, it would be available at the counter. So that would certainly be amended based on what you vote on tonight.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Yes?
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Hafensberger?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. All right, moving on. Discussion items. Purchase of a generator for village hall. Yeah? You want to handle this?
All right. Hopefully, this won't take as long, but we've discussed this many times, too. But I do want to thank Trustee Botner. He came in, we've spoke about this a few times, but we spoke again this past week about this. We all know that the KDOT generator is there for purchase, which is what we all originally had discussed, and the board was in consensus of it. It is $15,000, and I'll let Trustee Botner, after I'm done speaking here, if he wants to jump in and add anything. I think we should purchase the KDOT generator, which, again, has minimal hours on there. The hours consist of them, making sure that this thing is just doing what it's supposed to do. It serves the purpose. That is a 60 KW generator. There was quotes, provide it for ones that were a little smaller, I think it was 35 KW, which was $20,000 itself. I understand that's brand new, but it's a fraction of the size. If the village would purchase this 60 KW, a lot of the costs associated with it is going to be covered. So KDOT already said they have no issue in transporting it, and no cost for the village from the current location to here. They said they'd be willing to help us install a concrete pad out here at no cost. They would do that as a favor. They would charge us approximately $1,500 to have their metal fabricateers, fabricators, sorry, build us an all-weather enclosed structure to put over it. So now, we are down to, we need a company to unhook it, which should not be that difficult, and then, obviously, the installation part. We are still waiting to get that final number on it. Trustee Botner's point to this was excellent, is if we took this 60 KW generator, which has two transfer switches, if we go ahead and install this, and say we cover all the police stuff here, we cover this room here, and even if that generator with the two transfer switches are not able to cover the power to the far-back offices, so be it. If we have an emergency, if we have a tornado, if we have a blizzard, we need to provide shelter, we need to provide heat, the basics for them. If we did this room here, this is a community room, we would be able to do that. So I think with the two transfer switches, we have no issues in doing that. Having the 60 KW, I keep hoping I say that right, generator allows us in the future, if the village says, "Hey, let's add another transfer switch and finish off the rest of the offices," to do that. That is my big speech and rambling, but really, I don't know much of what I'm talking about. I just talk with experts. So if Trustee Botner wants to add anything to it, well, that would be my recommendation.
All right, discussion? Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, so that's exactly what we talked about, and that's totally right.
I know, I saw those words.
No, not at all. But what I was pushing for was one transfer switch originally that would have covered the majority of everything that we really need to have operational. This comes with another transfer switch, so it's going to double all of that. And then, you have the ability in the future to put a couple more transfer switches in. So we might be able to get this monster generator in for, you know, under $50,000, hopefully, you know, $45,000, if these numbers from JRC kind of equate and are similar to the hookup of the new one, because we wouldn't have to pay the $6,000 for the transfer switches. Really, if we were using their $20,000 number, it's totally plausible that we could get this done for 45 grand. I think it's a great idea.
If there's consensus to move it forward, I will work with the chief, and we'll get prices from at least two vendors, if not three, on the installation of this generator from KDOT and the transfer, two transfer switches for a package that'll be on the 21st, or it'll be on the first meeting in November. So you'll have quotes from vendors to do the installation. We know we're going to ask for quotes, because we're going to go with the 60 KW from KDOT.
But Teresa and I are going to unhook the old one for free.
What are we doing?
No, you won't. Is that where we're at, do you think, Nick?
I think so.
Okay. That's all we're looking for, direction tonight. If there's consensus on that, we-
I just had a quick question about, after, I think in the last meeting, weren't we talking about whether or not, is it this generator that was approved with the ARPA funds?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Because I had, so, are we paying for it through ARPA funds, then? How is that working?
No. The deadline from the Commerce Department U.S.
Okay.
was March 1st of this year, to expend your ARPA dollars, or commit that you had it expended. We didn't know if we were going to buy anything on March, by March 1st. So we used the remaining $45,000 or $48,000 for the work that was done in the basement earlier last year on, that was eligible cost for the server and the accompanying work in the basement regarding to the computers. So it's been closed out, the ARPA dollars.
Okay, so on-
This will be out of capital expenditure money.
Okay. So on the last financial report we received from Timothy, the, there was an entry for ARPA funds on the cash balance that said $175,000 left in that account. So what is that?
That, that was transferring some remaining, they created an ARPA bank account. We've expended the money, but the account needed to be, both Barbara and Tim needed to make a move in the bank to transfer the money to the general fund that's already been expended. I don't think it was 107, but-
It was 170, it's on our-
Yeah, I didn't transfer the funds. It was-
It's on our, it's on the last report. So it was 175,000, so.
So, the money was expended out of the general fund for that, and we're reimbursing the general fund?
Yes, 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 yes. Because the, we've zeroed out the 1.175, or whatever it was that you were given three years ago. It's, there's a banking issue, because Tim can't do it without the village president. So it's an internal issue.
What can't Tim do without the village president?
Making that transfer of that account to the general fund. The money, the money has been shown to the Commerce Department and the board over the years with the correction. So I can, he's going to be here on the 21st, and you can ask him very directly.
Okay. Because he had, he was very clear in the last finance committee meeting that he does the transfer of funds, so why could he not transfer?
He doesn't, I'm sorry. There's some funds that he must have the village president with him, either with the KEFAB dual authentication, or at the bank to make the change. Because we, just for the security of our money as a village, there's a lot of times there's two, two names on the account, both have to be present or, and do this.
We'll have, yeah, we've got a lot more to talk about that later, I think, but-
He'll be here on the 21st to get into that detail.
Okay. Because he had, yeah, because he had told me that, yeah, that money was already spoken for?
It's been, it's been expended. It's just reimbursing, as Mike said, the general fund.
So are we going to get an accounting of that?
He'll be here on the 21st and go detailed into it, and I can have him call it out special on his report for the 21st. He'll be doing a staff report on the 21st.
Okay. Because, yeah, it's a little concerning that that has been sitting in there without being accounted for and moved over up until now, isn't it?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that I was not there when it was moved over, so. Okay, that's- All right. You said it was moved over. Yep. Yep.
Tim, Tim will be here on the 21st to clear it all up, and we can just, you brought up an issue, we'll make sure he details it out on the 21st.
It did sound like you said it was moved over, though.
Yeah, he did.
No, the money has been, I'm, I'm going to be very clear again.
I know.
The Commerce Department, we have closed with the Commerce Department, because the rehab and the remaining eligible expenses had to be demonstrated that the money has been expended for the ARPA deadline.
And we-
That, that has been done, and then he, because we had, the last balance that we had last year, we had Susan Griffin, the special payment made to help Tim account for the ARPA dollars. There was a $45,000 balance after the expenditure to rehab this building and some other costs. That was then set aside to do the generator, but we didn't actually execute to purchase and move forward with installing that generator. We're coming up on the deadline, and we then expended the dollars for the servers and other costs associated with the IT. Yes, in substitute of the generator to finalize the document. What movement of the account at the bank back to the general fund, I think that's what's in question. And I'll have Tim present to go through that.
Okay. Because he'll give us a report that outlines all of where that, what that $175,000 was supposed to go towards.
Yeah, I think it's already, yes. We were very clearly only had $45,000 to spend.
I need to know what it was spent on, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Oh, Kim, go ahead.
Okay, I think the dates are wrong. I did some digging into this. The funds needed to be obligated by a deadline of December 31st, 2024. Not March. Expenditure, the actual expenditures towards any projects still remaining to pay out is due by 31st of 2026. And any funds not obligated have to be returned, and it's the U.S. Treasury. U.S. Treasury. So I guess, for me, I definitely want Tim to give us some accounting on this, because the IT stuff downstairs was not $45,000, for one. Also, I would like to see our annual report, since we were under a $10 million give of ARPA funds, we should only have been required to report it annually. So, and that report actually is not due until April 30th, I think. The 30th, yeah. It's in April. Yeah.
And they might have extended it.
Okay. And that's my only comment. I want to make sure that we're not going to get us, what's in trouble here.
All right. Any other comments? Ready to move on? All right. All right, we have 6B, deed to two empty lots, or deed, two empty lots to Norton Lake HOA, and allow HOA to maintain the prairie in a manner they choose.
This is Norton Lake. We took a vote on, I think it was lot, what was it, 105, 109, a year ago to, for whatever it was, to make a legal contract. But that HOA board dissolved. The new HOA board at Norton Lake is willing to take that same lot, and then they wanted to be able to exercise their own control over the prairie that was established as prairie. It's kind of too close to the homes and too close to a adjoining property at Fox Mill, and they want to have free hand on how they manage that lot. And so, they're asking for us to do that. So I'm just, and then there's another small sliver where we expended, I think it was $4,800 some dollars, just under $5,000, to trim four trees, cut them down, and trim another three, so that they would accept that small sliver as well, so it wouldn't be on the village from the 2007 and '09 PUD to establish Norton Lake. For some reason, the village kept these two lots. And if the HOA is willing to take over the maintenance and the liability of those lots, we just need direction for Carmen to write that up as a resolution for next meeting to effectuate that.
All right. Teresa?
So were those, those lots were part of, like, the land cash donation?
Yes.
So are they, they're going to be kept as open space, correct?
That's, yes.
So it'll be, okay.
They can't build on them.
Okay. Perfect.
All right. Anything else? Discussion? Need a consensus?
Just that Carmen will prepare that and put it on. If it reads that way, you'll have it on consent next agenda.
All right.
We've dealt with that a couple times, I think.
Okay, we'll move on to 6C, discuss and set public hearing date for Village of Campton Hills Comprehensive Plan 2025. Okay. Janet?
I only have one typo, actually. I've tried to avoid getting any typos on this, but everybody's done such a good job finding all the other typos, and we've dealt with a lot of the other larger issues. I'm down with typos. So, on page 119, under the topic Conservation Design, the sentence that says, "Conservation is a concept where intensier land usage uses." Yeah, I think we mean, I think we mean more intensive. So, but I do like intensier, that's, yeah.
Yeah, get your little French in there.
Otherwise, I'm fine with this document.
Yeah, I did catch that. I actually gave a list to Jim Brown of ones I did find.
So he's got, he's got it all?
Oh, yeah, and he just came back and said, "Thanks."
All right.
He had something where he managed to put a couple, two little Js in somewhere, too, that wasn't there before, so.
All right.
Well, if we're going to really dig deep, we also got institutional spelled wrong on page 120. The first paragraph, yeah, last sentence, first paragraph, page 120, Conservation Design.
Do you want to, you want to email him that, too?
No, I, I'll give it.
You'll give it to him? Okay.
But then, are we ready then to, because we-
We've passed the, attorney will tell us, we've passed the 90-day from a public hearing. This board now will have to conduct another public hearing with the final changes, and then discuss it, and either adopt it that night, or move it to adoption another night. So are we comfortable to put this on for a public hearing and possible adoption on the 21st?
Sure.
All right, Carmen? Carmen will write that up?
Sure, I just need to make sure that it's enough.
Well, it may not be, I'm sorry, it won't be the 21st. It won't make the notice for the 21st, it'll have to be November. With page 119 and 120 corrections. And if there's any other scribblers that come out, tell us, and we'll make that- And if there's any other scribblers that come out, tell us, and we'll make that, those minor changes do. Sounds good.
All right. Six D, ordinance thirteen dash oh two, providing for village administrator slash ordinance sixteen dash oh two, adopting organization chart. Discussion, Janet?
I don't usually say this, but I feel that it's late, and that this is a large topic. And, and I, I would like to suggest that we defer this until our next meeting.
Okay. Consensus, is that, is that good with everybody? Yeah, good, okay.
This is on recording.
All right. Six E, Harley Road Annexation. Mark, or Carmen?
Carmen.
Yep, as we've at least generally discussed before, there've been some property owners on the west side of Harley Road, south of Route thirty-eight, that have expressed interest in joining the village. We've had various levels of sign-on to some draft annexation agreements with those people, with those property owners. Most are fairly the same in nature because they're mostly developed properties with single-family homes and some farmland, to which those owners are looking to maintain as, as farmland. So we're still trying to hammer out the final details of those agreements, and then we'll have them before you for discussion before we can set. We'd like to set a public hearing on all of them at the same time if we can. That way, we can do them all at the same time. But look for them in the next, hopefully in the next month. I was hoping to have some drafts today, but there were some changes to one of them that wasn't ready to be made public yet, so.
All right, Kim, go ahead.
So there'll be, there'll be separate agreements for each property owner?
Right, because they're separate property owners. I think we have-
And of course, we're obligated at Bridge, right? There's five?
Already got it.
Four.
I'm sorry, I, I missed a question, I'm sorry.
No, it's-
Yeah, yeah, I think there are four, I think, it's either four or five property owners.
There's five, and there's five-
Five in total, but I think four are still in, and one is still contemplating.
And a couple of them have several parcels, it's not, you know, singular parcel each, so.
But it would be the existing village limit, if you go south from the west side, it goes one property from the bridge. The landscape yard slash owner of that parcel is not in, the, involved. But everybody else between the existing, where you have the Yaki subdivision that was considered, that got pulled back, that's already in the village. And then everything south of that, up to the landscape abandoned, kinda not-used yard right before the, you go over the bridge heading southbound. And yes, we, with the annexation for the Shodine development, we have that Harley Road up to the overpass. We don't have the south, Kestlenger, that seventy-seven acres on the corner of the Wade Light property. We don't have that corner. So we have Harley by the annexation, virtually the entirety of, of Harley, except that little sliver down at the south end, as it abuts Kestlenger. Irrespective of doing this annexation. So we won't get in, we already have the burden of the overpass.
And there's a ninety-ten application already in for it.
Yes, yes, sir. That we're just gonna follow on top of what Blackberry Township started.
Yeah, Blackberry Township is already in for engineering and for property acquisition for ninety federal, ten percent local.
There's no guarantee we're gonna get the ninety-ten, but the basic worst case would be eighty-twenty, I'm told.
Or you just don't do it until they get it to you.
Until we get to ninety-ten. Cause it's not gonna fall down or become unsafe in the next-
No, it's already, it's already weight, it's already weight posted.
Yes.
We can lower the weight posting if we have to, but I'm not worried.
Can, can you clarify that fifth property owner, have they been talked to, or have they-
They have.
And they decided not to, or?
Well, they're still contemplating, it's, it's a not-for-profit organization, that's the Anderson Animal Hospital. They're considering it, but they've been considering it, how long has it been, since last December?
Yeah, about almost a year.
Well, we went and visited them at their site. Yes.
Yeah, they know that.
They know that. But they haven't, they haven't signed on. The others are very interested and spoken about what the details. We would've had all of them ready, except there was a change this weekend on one of, one of them, and that's the lead family that the rest follow.
Well, once Harley, once the word gets out that they're annexed Anderson, then might give us a call again. Yeah. We hope, that's for sure. All right, anything else?
Yeah, just, just, just one little thing, you said we can help them, is that the entrance off of thirty-eight, by chance?
I don't think that's gonna ever happen, I mean, right in. They can have right in. No, but we can help them get better access on Harley, yeah.
Okay.
The curb cut, no, yeah, that's it. All right. All right, ready? Additional items from President, trustees, attorney, anybody, Mike?
I, did I hear parts of a conversation, we're setting up a separate fund for the escrow? A separate account for the escrow?
We're gonna set up a bank account for the escrow for Shodine.
Good, that's what I thought, cause it's gonna be easier to track that long-term. So that was the, now, I'm back in, I'm back in, I'm back in the groove here now. So, who's six and O, and beat Geneva, and beat Batavia? For the first time in a long time?
Go North Stars.
Roll Stars.
Go ahead, Treese.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna add real quick to the, I, I think everyone got a copy of the memo that I sent out about the escrow, but that is provided for in our code, and so we really had kind of no choice. And so I was just thinking, we need to kind of pay attention to our code because I think sometimes we go running in a direction, and we don't take a look there and see what we're supposed to be doing, and it was right there telling us what to do, so. We should make sure we're looking there.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, gee.
You're not done yet, so I don't have my monthly report until next meeting, but I would like to thank trustee Burson over there for holding off on that other section because yesterday I started a three-week ma, executive management course through Northwestern. So I come here in the morning, work, I go to Naperville and do that, and then I'm back here tonight doing this. So thank you very much. So I only have two quick things real fast, it's gonna be my constant reminder till Halloween. Boo After Dark, Saturday, October twenty-fifth, six to nine, that's in partnership with Campton Township Parks and Open Space. Completely free event for the entire community. Spooky hay ride, free pumpkins, candy hunt, Halloween costume contest with monetary prizes, bonfire, bonfire with smores, games, activities, scary animals, guests can visit. Dave's Wild Fries food truck will be there, taking part in the event. And they just recently, Dogtopia, thank them. They're gonna sponsor a pet parade costume during the event. So, and it's not only open to dogs and cats, you can bring out your lizards and snakes if you'd like to dress them up in costumes. So a big thank you to Community Relations Committee, Stavi, and Caitlin and Carter from Campton Township Parks and Open Space. And one last thing real fast, Fire Police Commission provided me their final scores and rankings for the sergeant promotional testing process that's been going on for over four months. All candidates had to successfully complete a pretty difficult written test evaluation from the chief and an oral interview with the commission. I wanna thank the Fire and Police Commission for their time and effort. Officer Doug Cusick will actually promote it, the sergeant at the board meeting on November fourth. And then Officer Bertolati is gonna be promoted, and Doug is October twenty-first. Tony's gonna be November fourth. So that, we have no sergeants in place, we haven't had no supervisors in place, so those first two are on nights, they will be on nights as sergeants, which is a big step forward. Still leaves us two down, but I'll work on those two in twenty twenty-six. But to all the officers that took part, congratulations to the ones that made the list, I'm sure they'll all do a great job.
Good, thank you.
Chief, how long's, how's along is the list active, then? Three?
Two years, unless the commission resends, or can extend if they need to.
Okay, anything else? Any other comments? Information? Right, motion to adjourn. Moved by Treese, seconded by Frank, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.